And calling to bring the order, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Here.
De Peña?
She'll be calling in shortly soon we connect.
Graziano?
Here.
Otary?
Here.
Robel?
Here.
Councilwoman Burke? She's calling in with her house. You know anything about us, Councilwoman Burke?
Thank you for calling. Please enter your conference. Please enter your pin, followed by the pound sign.
Did I call you?
Transfer you to the conference now.
What allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands alone, nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have Councilwoman De Peña on the phone?
Yes, we do.
Perfect. Sunshine.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, known as the Sunshine Law, notice of this meeting was published in the Thursday, December 22, 2022 editions of the Bellville Times and Star Ledger. The sunshine was complied with by adopting and following to the press, postified with the municipal clerk, the annual, uh, funds the municipal clerk, the annual resolution shown the date, time, and place of each regular meeting. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the town hall bulletin board, it is also on the website.
Okay, next item on the agenda, report to manager.
Good evening, everyone. Just a very quick and brief report today. Not sure if the mayor is going to include this, just in case he misses it. Our stadium, uh, which has some great conversation about, has won an old award, which will be recognized at the League of Municipalities. We received a, uh, it's actually negli engineering for the engineering of the stadium, but based on the, um, final product, we received an award from the League of Municipalities, honorable mention, which is great. The, uh, I said, how come we didn't get first? They said, uh, the field in Patterson that they spent like, uh, a hundred million dollars on.
That had a one.
That, that one had a one. Also, just as a footnote to the mayor and council, um, all of our RFPs and RFQs, I should say all of them, all the ones that we can, that are statutory for July 1st, are all now being condensed to a calendar year or January 1st. We're receiving all of our professionals on November 9th, and all the contracts are going to start on July 1st. Just in the past, we had contracts that started in February, June, July, August. So, um, it was pretty difficult to keep track of all of them. This is going to make it, um, uh, very uniformed, and going forward, it's going to make everybody's life easier. I know Frank and Albert put a lot of work behind us, so, um, you'll see that on the agenda. And just as the last footnote, we're still working with Green Acres to hopefully be able to come up with a project for the February 2024 deadline. Um, they're still counting the Fableview project as two separate projects, and the stadium project is now complete. And we just have one other outstanding issue. Uh, but we're hoping to be in a position to go out for another Green Acres application in February of 2024. And that's my report.
Questions for manager, questions? There are none, seen none. We will move on to the report of the mayor. Uh, first, you may have noticed, uh, most, actually all of the elected officials and most members of the administration today are once again wearing pink. We've been doing this now for the last four or five years, the last meeting in October, uh, in, uh, respect, uh, in solidarity with, uh, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So, past events, uh, as you probably realize now, our food truck festival was canceled, it was postponed to the following Friday. It was a good turnout, even though it was a postponed event, very well attended, uh, very successful event. Looking forward to next year's on a Saturday, not a Friday, not raining. Bellville Fire Department on October 14th had their fire department annual safety event, uh, was very good, very well attended. I saw that Nutley even copied it and did it either the same week or the week after, but she, uh, congrats for having good ideas, they get stolen by other townships. Uh, townwide garage sale also canceled because of rain. We got one, actually, uh, the first day was a, a rain out, the second day was the Sunday, uh, went well. Everybody seemed to be very happy, and there was a lot of traffic in this town and Lynnhurst, because we both happened to have it the same exact weekend. Fire, uh, police department did a great job with the women's self-defense class, I saw some pictures, that was very well attended, and, uh, always nice for, to see the police department and our fire departments doing events like that for our community. Upcoming events, tomorrow, dual events, Bellville Police Department meet and greet and a New Jersey anchor event, uh, by, uh, the Assemblywoman. That's now our current Assemblywoman for a few more months, that's going to be at the Senior Center from 4 to 7. Information's on the website, what you need to bring, anchor checks are starting to hit. So because of that, a lot of, uh, a lot of interest in that program, make sure you get there if you have not registered yet. Uh, Thursday, myself, uh, Deputy Mayor, uh, uh, Casarelli and Councilman Tommy Graziano will, uh, be supporting breast cancer awareness once again, as we volunteer our times, uh, in support of the Michael Ross Common House Breast Cancer Awareness Civic Association, or nonprofit that he has, so information on that, it's on social media and on their website. October 28th, this coming Friday, is our Halloween event, always a very well-attended event. This year, we have added, oh, Saturday, Saturday, October 28th, from 11 to 2 at Bellville High School, at the front lawn there. New this year, we lost Jake the Snake, but because we lost Jake the Snake, we are now doing a pet costume contest. Fear was the snake would have eaten a small pet, snake's not there, now we could do a pet contest. Veterans Day 5K is going to be Sunday, November 12th, 9:00 a.m. Registration is on par with last year, but we want it to be a little better. Proceeds go to our four veterans organizations, as well as a scholarship in the name of a Bellville High School senior who's either gotten parent in the military or heading to some military academy. That will be followed at noon by the Bell, by the Bellville Veterans Day Parade, same day, Sunday, November 12th. If you're interested in participating, check out the website. News, Halloween home decorating contest, deadline will be next Monday. Thank you to Whiskey Priests for sponsoring the prizes. I always see a lot of great houses that are decorated, yet nobody ever submits them. So, if you see something on, uh, out there while you're driving around, Tommy, as you're walking around, if you see something out there, take a picture. You can submit on behalf of a friend, a family member, or yourself, and that, now, now you run, right?
You run.
All right, well, might be blurry then, if you're trying to take a picture. Uh, make a note of the address, let carry on. Winter sports registration is available on our website. Uh, the mayor's balcony, as you see, is probably lit up for pink, for Breast Cancer Awareness Fund. As I also mentioned, the council's wearing pink today as well. Lastly, uh, we went out for bids for the third time, I believe, for Plan Zone Park, and, uh, we're waiting for some bid results to come back for that. Now that's it for my mayor's report, next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Motion. Second, need a motion for the combined conference regular meeting, October 10th, 2023, we have a motion, we have a second. Clerk, call roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
De Peña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Otary?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
May I to approve?
Next item, communications.
Uh, you have a resolution, uh, from the planning board, uh, recommending, uh, certain areas known as 202 and 215 Bellville Avenue be designated as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment.
Next item on the agenda is ordinances. Ordinance 30 dash 23, ordinance for possible adoption, and ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the Town Show Bellville, New Jersey, Chapter 8 dash 16, entitled Handicap Parking Spaces. Need a motion? Motion open for public, right?
Second.
Have a motion made and second to open for public, clerk, call roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
De Peña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Otary?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
We're now open for public commenting on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Anybody on the phone? Okay, entertaining motion to close, move for final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and second, clerk, call roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
De Peña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Otary?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Next, ordinance 39 dash 23, ordinance for possible adoption, ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the Town Show Bellville, Essex County, New Jersey, Chapter 8 dash 2.7, stopping or standing prohibited during certain hours on certain streets, the purpose of street cleaning. Motion open for public?
Second.
We have a motion made and second to open for public, uh, clerk, call roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
De Peña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Otary?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
We're open for public commenting, and public commenting only on this, Mr. Frank Tantone. Just take your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Vincent Frank Tantone, 129 Mount Harperspect. Yeah, Vincent Frank Tantone, 129 Mount Harperspect. I don't know if this is a misprint, but the, um, it says, "Both sides of the street from 6:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m." I know on our street, it's a problem for the street, we, at least we can go across street. Where are these people going to park? Who have to move their cars. Normally, it's one side one day, and, uh, the other side another day. Is that, was this a misprint or somebody?
I'm not aware of any misprints.
Doesn't say what day, though.
That would be High Street, East Side and West Side. From 6:00 a.m. to 7:30 a.m.
But does it say what day?
It doesn't say what day, that may be, you're right, day may be different.
Days are different. Do we have any day somewhere?
Both sides?
It's usually open inside, right?
Yes, it's like Tuesday, Thursday, or something like that.
Yeah, all, the rest of it, it's all two different days, and one side, this is on the same day, and.
Well, nobody said it's the same day yet, Mr. Frank Tantone.
What?
Nobody said it's the same day yet.
Well, no, this is the day.
That's, you are correct on that, but it does not, you can't say.
This is an amendment to, to, to the terms.
Right, so whatever day they're currently, whatever day is there.
This is not a new ordinance, this is an amendment to the ordinance, that was going in there, the days were staying the same. I remember now, it was just to accommodate with the school there and there and the buses, it's all.
So it's not the same day, it's amended to the time.
Whatever's there now been for the days remain the same, we're changing the time only.
Right, so this is a misprint.
No, no.
It's not a misprint, it's an amendment, the, the, there was the original ordinance stays the same.
What do you change?
The times, the times, I remember now.
But they're going to be opposite sides of it?
Yes, whatever's there now been stays the same, day buys, and we're, oh, we're totally changing it.
Anybody else for public commenting on this ordinance, this ordinance only, Mr. Sheldon?
Uh, good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47 Plight Street, um, sort of the same general confusion, based on what, uh, Mr. Minkini just said, he, he said that this was being done to accommodate the middle school, High Street is the street where the, um, middle school buses park. But if, if, if that, this would only work on, on two days, what about the other three days of the week? So I wonder, quite interesting.
It's not being done to accommodate the middle schools, it's being done to accommodate our DPW, to make it easier.
You don't have to do it on those days.
It's not accommodating the middle schools.
To make it easier for them to get. That's what he did.
Maybe I did, maybe I didn't, but, uh, perhaps I misspoken, that's not the case.
That's why I was asking the question, because I was somewhat confused. If it was, if it was going to help the middle school, you would do this.
It's the help for our DPW, make it easier for them to get.
Door to the day. Anybody else for a public comment on this ordinance, this ordinance only? Anybody online? Any motion to close, move for final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, call roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
De Peña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Otary?
Yes.
Uh, Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance 42 dash 23, ordinance for introduction, and ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the Town Show Bellville, New Jersey, Chapter 8 dash 16, entitled Handicap Parking Space. Need a motion for introduction? Motion introduced.
Second.
Motion made and second introduced, clerk, call roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
De Peña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
And myself, yes. He's got me, Otary. I'm sorry. He's got me on a big here.
We're moving. Next item, I need a motion to open public participation.
Rose?
Second. Motion made and second to open public participation, clerk, call roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
De Peña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Otary?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
We are now open for public commenting. Uh, going to ask you, please just to raise your hand, once I call a fine, you come on forward, say your name and address. For the record, you have five minutes to speak on what we all hope is township-related business.
Area 307 Fairway Avenue. First thing, I brought up a couple meetings ago about the wires, the tree hanging on the wiring, right, you're hanging this store across the street on Bellville Avenue. The big, big branches are pushing down on the wires, they need to be cussed, the branches. Hasn't been done yet.
I could call that into PSCQ.
That's what you said the last time.
Oh, you did, you did. That's the one you did.
Second of all, number, the school number one, the old property. They've been complaining about the overgrown shrubs all over the curb, the walkways and everything, and nothing's been done about that.
You sound like Church Code Department complaints, uh, so if you're saying that you submitted those complaints to the Church Code Department already, and nothing's been done?
Been complained, I haven't complained about it, other people have, there's nothing been done.
Okay, town manager here, he, he runs the town, and he could also find out what's going on at Church Code Department.
All right, and, uh, third thing is, when the town is called to clean up a piece of property, how do they, how do they come to the amount that they charge for that?
If it's a clean to lean, with DPW, I believe it's an hourly rate. And they're going to place on the property.
But this is a small piece of property, the lady's, has no money, she has no money, because she can't afford to do it. The town was, supposedly was called, we come in to clean it up, doesn't look like it was cleaned up to me, but it's only grass only.
Did you call the town?
Excuse me?
Did you call the town?
No, I didn't.
You represent a lot of people today, so it would just be helpful if the people you represent, you have a date and a time, and they call, so the manager can track down.
Decide to, decide to think. The lady, the lady's broke, she has no money, she, she's in bad health, she can't afford to have to, to clean it up. The town's supposed to be cleaned, uh, cleaned it up in August, which they didn't, because I have pictures of each month, I go over there every two weeks for, and then they charge.
Show the manager the pictures, you have an address.
They charge $600, and it's grass only.
You have an address?
What?
Do you have an address?
Uh, Tree, Tree Gregory.
Oh, Florence, Florence's house.
Excuse me?
You're talking about Florence's house on Gregory?
Yes. Charge $600, but on, uh, for, for cleaning it up, and I got pictures of each month, I could show you.
Mike, I know it's been, I know it's been cut, Gar, because if it wasn't cut, it would, it would be ridiculously high, and I walk by there every day with my, my.
I could show you pictures of each month, every two, two weeks.
Go take a picture today, I, I guarantee it's not as bad.
And they try, charge you $600.
Well, she's, she's in a home, isn't she?
Yes.
And, and the house is in receivership, or, I, we don't know.
What?
The house is in receivership, or we don't know.
The what ship?
Receivership, somebody, are there leans on it, what else is going on? Yeah, because she's, she's not competent, and nobody wants to take control of it, so it becomes a mess.
Exactly. But the whole thing is, $600 to go in here and.
I wasn't there.
Cut grass, and I mean, a property is so small, it sounds outrageous to me.
I can't come on, I'd have to see the bill, it could be a technically involved. I, I don't, without seeing the bill, but now I have an address, I can look it up. What's up?
Thank you, sir. Anybody else for public commenting? I'll entertain a motion to open, Mr. Frank Tantone.
Yeah, Vince Frank Tantone, 129 Mount Harperspect. I'm going to speak, uh, say some things about Resolution R and S. R is that, uh, the wet property on Bellville Avenue, in the parking lot across the street, which had to leave its spot zoning, and, uh, S is the premier developer on the school one property. We're out of control now with this overdevelopment, not only in Bellville, all over. Uh, we got Patterson, a recent article, Patterson's tax base has fallen dramatically, and what they blame? The hundreds of development have gotten tax breaks over the years, all right? And the property owners, the average property owner, has to pick up, uh, this difference. And then in regard to that, you have a councilman over there, a big article, he's opposed to it. One of his quotes is, "This is just another means to overpopulate the city without any concern for the people or city services," which is something I've been talking about for years. And then, Mayor, I believe, uh, why, no, because you publicly endorsed, uh, Jack Sidorelli for governor. Well, he just wrote an op-ed in the paper last week about his plan, what's wrong with New Jersey and how to fix it, and one of the things is, we need, this is a quote from his article, "We need common sense land use, that is, stop suburban overdevelopment." So there's something you enforce. And then, we have another councilman in another town, who provides campaign literature, "Fight overdevelopment."
We're, we're, we're showing campaign literature from another town.
This is, oh, no, this is from the town of Bellville.
Oh, okay.
All right, this was.
No, it's not from the town of Bellville, it's from a candidate for office.
In the town of Bellville, and a sitting councilman.
That's right.
All right, so, the point is, overdevelopment is killing all of New Jersey. We're the most densely populated, uh, town in the state. Uh, my wife just took two weeks off, uh, two days off in Atlantic City, we decided to come up the, uh, west side of New Jersey, just tour all time. You can't get through the state, no matter where you go. 1:30, on the way up to, a month ago, we came to Camden to see the, what they say, it's a beautiful town, uh, it's a disaster, but to go, we stopped some place to eat, and we had four miles to go to Trenton, 40 minutes to go, four miles. Bellville Avenue is now the same, just when I came here, traffic was backed up, people blowing their horns on the corner. This is what's going on, Montclair, Lowfield, Bell, all this, it's overdevelopment. So, uh, Mr. Robel, the councilman?
I guess it did, I guess it did, and nobody heard me, right, Vin?
I don't see you fighting, I hope you oppose these two resolutions, because that's overdevelopment.
R is wet, I will never oppose that. Have it redeveloped. For, for the first time in many years, we don't have a go-go joint developed. I'm, I'm for that.
Yeah, we don't get the credit for that, doesn't it?
We don't get the credit for that one.
Well, let him show it, let him show it, no reason for the town to get involved.
Go-go joint, is that what you're doing, you're promoting go-go joints?
No, I was one of the biggest opponents at the planning board hearing, we gave documented evidence, because my wife's cousin worked there, they lied, they said it was a go-go joint from the year one, but she, no, she worked as a waitress when it was the Red Shingle Inn.
That was a go-go joint, too.
It was not, it was not a go-go joint for years and years, I think they lied. No, I got the telephone book, it was called the Red Shingle Inn. When I moved in in 67, it was the Red Shingle Inn, a restaurant, where we went for dinner quite a few times.
You never remember that.
And then it became a, go, well, I have the telephone book to prove it.
Thank you, Mr. Frank Tantone, I needed a wrap-up.
Yeah, well, that's the point, and then just one more, overdevelopment has got to stop. But at the last meeting, Mr. Iacocca said something iconic, um, about the municipal stadium underneath there, it said had no lights and no water.
No power.
When did that happen?
Long before me.
Well, here's a picture of underneath there, when I was in office, we totally renovated it, there's a before and after, you see the lights are on. That stadium for the 150th anniversary was in perfect condition, all the bathroom to work and concession stand, all the lights, everything was painted, it was in A1 shape.
Thank you, I do need you to wrap up with Mr. Frank Tantone.
So how did, how did no plumbing and no lights happen?
Thank you.
So I get no answers.
Time is up, happened before myself, and happened before Mr. Iacocca.
Okay, it's another excuse to get your buddies, engineers and contractors, big contractor, for something, and I have a whole bunch of pictures that town employees could do and should do, without hiring all these engineers at all.
Some, some mayor, if I may?
Yes, I'm a, I'm a buddy.
This, this picture that you're showing is not underneath on the ground level.
It's a weight room?
This is, yeah, this is, this is up above, this is, this is not the tower, this is not where you're going to start.
It's not even painted, Vin, he's talking where it's not, he's talking where it's not even painted.
That's where you're going from the north side. You might be talking about the south side, which the border veg store there.
Right, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about that apples and oranges, that's apples and oranges, that's all.
That was the border veg.
Thank you, Mr. Frank Tantone.
Responsible.
Yeah, that's apples and oranges.
That whole area, all the doors that put that stadium, and then that, I didn't have the other picture.
All right, Mr. Frank Tantone, we, we get it, you have a lot of photos, you have a lot of documents, we understand. Mr. Frank Tantone, you did mention the last council meeting, and you've just shown yet another picture that's, uh, could be a little bit deceiving, because you, you like to come to the council meetings and wave things around and say things, and because you've been coming here for 40 years, people just take you at your word until somebody then looks at it. For many, many meetings that I've been here, you've stood up publicly and accused me of filing a frivolous lawsuit against a township, who even swore, and I made a bet with you and said, "Come back in here and show me where I filed a frivolous lawsuit against a township." And you sat there, meeting after meeting, talking about the fact that you have the documents at home, and you're going to bring them in, you're going to bring them in. The last council meeting, you did bring in some document, I have no idea who gave it to you, you should find out, because they're purposely misleading you. But yet, you, you read a piece of that that was not written by the judge, you read a piece of that that was written by the lawyer that was against me. So, that same exact document, same exact document that you cherry picked the information from, I'm now, since everybody can hear me and everybody understands what's going on, I'm going to read what the order issued by Judge Walder said. Same exact document, same heading that you had there, same one that you waved around last week.
Read the previous judge, read the previous, not Judge Walter.
Mr. Frank Tantone, I'm going to read what the judge said, the last judge. "The court declines to sanction the plaintiff for pursuing his claims. The record before the court does not support, does not support, does not support, Mr. Frank Tantone, the conclusion that the plaintiff's claims were unmeritous, wholly unmeritous, frivolous, or unsupported by the facts." That's what the judge said, so, that's why, Mr. Frank Tantone, you come here for 40 years and you wave stuff, nobody takes you serious, because everyone knows you cherry pick information. People, you play on their, on their naivety, because they don't have the time to put into this stuff, you do, but the things you say aren't wholly true all the time. You can't come to council meetings and constantly say things that are factually incorrect. This is exactly what the judge said, Mr. Frank Tantone, not what you read, which was clearly written by the opposing council when you stood here last council meeting.
Who was quoting the previous judge.
Hello, Mr. Frank Tantone.
And I have the whole transcript of the next meeting.
Bring it in the next meeting, yeah, because anybody else for public commenting?
I'm bringing up on the next meeting.
Does it belong on there, 839 Main Street, apartment A? Just wanted to know the status, I guess, uh, so you have the Senior Center, and you have the Senior Building next to the Senior Center, and.
Oh, no, sir, that's incorrect, we have the Senior Center, and there's a private building next to it that we do not have, it's private.
Well, I, I didn't mean you have it, but there's a building next to it, let's just say that's 55 plus, and there is no path that's paved to go from that building to the Senior Center, and it seems like it's been something going back and forth on tools, the land, and I've spoke to the owner of that property, and, uh, he says, "It's not my property, I don't care if the town wants to put it, but it sounds like some of it's his property, and maybe some of it's the town's property." And I know Anthony told me to sit tight, you're working on it, whatever it is, I just wanted to know the status of that.
I don't think there's any additional status, I mean, the status that I had was, I know that we reached out to the owner, as I told you. That is an issue, I sit in the Senior Building and watch seniors have to walk down their driveway, walk to Mill Street, which has no sidewalk, by the way, and with canes and crutches and walkers and, uh, electronic.
Wheelchairs, leaning in a wheelchair.
Electronic wheelchairs, come in the street on Franklin, on Frank, across Mill Street to Franklin, and we reached out first time, uh, we got nowhere with the owner. Then we had our fire department look at it, because interestingly, our fire truck cannot get over that bridge. They have to come in through the Senior Building and go up that gravel road. So we had our deputy chief, I believe, reach out and say it was a fire safety issue, we asked them to pave it, or to at least make it so we can traverse it, and we were told, "No, he's not going to do that." That's all, all the information I have.
Maybe if there was any funding left in, in the town for paving roads or anything, that something like that could be used for that?
I, I don't see why we couldn't do that, I mean, after, we, we can't get them to do it. Okay, thank you. Anybody else, man?
Name and number of the election made 33 main should, I guess I'm running the appropriate top tonight.
Beautiful.
First of all, finishing up this question, if you can't get the owner of the road to do anything, why not? That's number one. And number two, can't you guys just do the town and then build the owner? You know, because, I mean, that's ridiculous.
Yes, but if we hadn't done that first, several people in this room would stand up and say that we're wasting township money, so we tried to deal with the owner first, take a second crack at him, and now we're going to look at it a third time.
I mean, that's, that's all well and good, I mean, you know, you guys have to do what you need to do, but my, my opinion would be, if they're, if he's unwilling to fix it, and, because I know it's a federally funded building, yada, 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 go to whoever can do it, you know? Because God forbid, you know, because once somebody comes down on that ground, they're not going to go after the building owner, they're going to come after the town. So that's number one. Number two, I spoke to the chief. Number two, I spoke to the chief in regards to the little corner, little road on Main Street near Riedel. And I understand I'm probably the only one who's ever complained, but considering I've nearly been taken out three times by cars, I'm getting a little ticked off about it, you know? So he's, you know, look into that. Last meeting, I spoke to the manager about the light on Jerome and Union, where are we on that? And you were?
We have some to take a look at, it's their responsibility, and we haven't gotten an answer from them.
Alright, so now it's back to the county's responsibility.
It's never to them, it's always to them.
Okay, so I go back to the drawing board, Anthony probably see about getting on him again. So it's another email to Joe D. Okay.
Well, they did respond, they're seriously considering looking at it, they're gonna get back to us on a fact.
Okay, like I said, I just want an answer, because I'm hearing from them, it's the town, I'm hearing now from you guys, it's them.
No, it was always them.
It's always them, they said the town would have to put the request in.
Right, we have to put the request, and we have, and it's on this-
I sent them an email and a phone call.
... projects the county has, and they promised to put Jerome and Union on there. Apparently, they're gonna do a bunch of it this second, the left turns.
Oh, well, that's always encouraged. Alright. And then, of course, the continuation, excuse me, right, interrupting conversation?
Excuse me, we're allowed to speak, we're allowed to speak, you're an attorney.
Whoa, whoa, first of all, I don't know, who am I talking to?
You're allowed to have a sidebar conversation.
You are the lawyer, I'm a taxpayer, hey, excuse me.
No, excuse me, no, yes, you're gonna choose me. Perhaps he's telling me about the county's responsibility, something I can answer you about. Just because you're speaking doesn't mean we all have to shut up up here, we're having a conversation, it's the town attorney, I'm trying to get answers to maybe answer you.
Oh, I thought you didn't answer questions though.
I don't answer all questions, I answer some if I have them.
Oh, I see, so you cherry-pick the answers you choose to-
Yeah, that's how it works.
Okay, so as a taxpayer, as a citizen, I would appreciate everyone's full undivided attention. If you have questions, fine, wait to them, for the audience to finish speaking.
Okay, next, anybody else, sir? By the way, I did have the answer, but I guess we're not gonna give it today. Sir?
Mary, Charles 95 Bell Street. In regards to this resolution S, premier developers, I know he's doing a number of projects, which one is this in particular that he's going to be redeveloped of?
Everybody have a quick?
Mary, I think it's the residential portion of school one, just let me check real quick.
Yeah.
I think that's what it is. Yeah, it's the residential portion of school one, so residential portion of where school one is next to the-
Okay, how many units, how many units is proposed here?
Was forty?
No, was forty. Forty, okay. Forty or plus forty?
No, I believe it's forty.
Okay, so it's forty, alright. I just wondered, 'cause I know he's doing a number of projects here, on the resolution R-
Yeah, I confirmed, it is, it's the school.
Okay, so it's forty units. On this resolution R, forty, I think, 202 Belleville, but I'm just a little puzzled at is, some of the buildings on Washington Avenue, alright, you know, to begin with, you have to give them an area redevelopment to get developers in. But I still can't understand how Belleville Avenue, the old, whatever the heck bar that with the red shingle or whatever you wanna call it, or whatever you wanna call it, and a lot, how does a lot fall under area redevelopment in a-
It does, Mario, and I'm sure you were at the planning board meeting where our planner testified and then answered all that.
No, not on this particular property.
It's not the first time that a lot-
No, I wasn't at this particular property. But all I'm saying is-
I was gonna give you the answer.
No, I know, but I'm gonna be done speaking, so you can talk all you want. All I'm saying is, how, when do we stop, I mean, I could see if there's a building falling down or something, but that area, I just don't understand how they can designate that an area redevelopment. Now bring it up again, we have an area, you have two things here, rehabilitation and redevelopment. Rehabilitation gets a six-year tax abatement, it was zero, well, I thought it was zero the first year in 2040-60.
After five years, they pay.
So, alright.
After five years, they pay, so in the six years, they pay.
Right, that's what I'm saying to the sixth year, okay, that's what I mean. Opposed to the redevelopment, which you can give them ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years. I mean, right now, the way things are going, there's no reason to do any more area redevelopment. Let them do the rehabilitation, 'cause the whole town's there, and they'll come, and then we'll get the tax dollars back quicker, and you'll also be paying it to the Board of Education. That's my sticking point, that they don't pay anything to the Board of Education.
That's not true, Mario, I've repeatedly educated you on that fact, it's not true.
Redevelopment doesn't pay anything?
You cannot say that they pay nothing to Board of Education.
Listen, I thought it was, okay, if I remember correctly reading, whatever you sent me one time, it says ninety-five percent goes to the town, five to the county, so where's the Board of Ed getting anything?
Land assessment.
What do you mean?
Explain that to me. That's on the improvement, on the land, you still pay municipal, county and Board of Education. They still pay-
No, I'm not aware of that, I always, I'm on the, the way I read it, it was ninety-five, zero, five.
On the improvements, but the land, tax guy.
Like on your house, you see your tax bill, there's a tax on the land, and there's a tax on the improved. In the redevelopment, they still pay the tax on the land, where everybody gets their piece of the taxes, including the Board of Ed. They don't pay the taxes, regular taxes.
Okay, so you're separating it there, so you're saying on the land-
I'm not separating it, that's the way-
No, no, what I'm saying, so you're saying on the land and improved, the land and improvements, they're paying to the Board of Education?
Land only.
Okay, the land only, they're paying whatever the assessment is, and then you, and the rest of it is debating, you know? So they are paying something, that's what you're saying?
They do get, yes.
I'm not saying it, that's a fact, they do pay something, even when there's an improvement now on a vacant land, the land becomes worth more, therefore they're actually paying more.
So, I wasn't, never aware of that, as far as I knew, that's why I'm asking these questions, alright, I'm done.
Also, there aren't properties being built pursuant to the area need of rehabilitation. You just don't hear about them, because they don't have to come here, because it's townwide. So, there are properties being built using that area need of rehabilitation. You just don't hear about them, because they don't have to come here, they don't have to go to a planning board either.
And if I may, correct me if I'm wrong, team, that this is the beginning, right? So this is just to start the process. There'll be other processes through the planning board to see if they get the approval for-
Whatever they wanna do.
Five years, five, ten, whatever, that's a whole nother, this just starts the process.
Now, I think you just explained some things which I wasn't aware of. Thank you, anybody else in public comment, sir?
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. First comment with resolution 27, 272-2023, R, the consent agenda. We're pretty much all on the same page here, we're all happy that wet is finally disappearing from Belleville. But I think the defining mechanism for its demise is, was COVID. If anything positive were to come from COVID, it was the fact that-
I believe it was closed like a year or two before COVID.
Yeah, I think for a year, the planning board testimony was, it was actually closed for three years. And I think after a two-year stoppage, it automatically winds up being an abandoned use. So, you know, fortunately, that's the, with the other consent agenda item S, which is the, as Mr. Martino said, is the residential part of the school one block along Academy Street. Premier developers, Mr. Teflinsky is the name developer, but since you're going to confer ANOR status upon this particular project, then Mr. Teflinsky, premier developers, has been a very significant, probably your biggest campaign contributor. I'm wondering if this is a bit of another ethical problem for you and your running mates. Perhaps you can get out of this, because it's been over a year since the election, I think there's a, Mr. Martino can verify this, but I think it's a one-year period after the donation is made where you may have an ethical conflict. Next property concerned to me, Kmart property, apparently a brand-new for lease sign has been put up on the building. Does this mean that the recently approved redevelopment plan by the planning board is being scrapped? The company that owns it, which is some holding company for Kmart and Sears, they have their website, their newly renovated website, and it looks like they're trying to find a tenant to use that property. The redevelopment plan, as I'm sure you remember, Mr. Mellon, you wanted to break that block up into four separate blocks.
Mr. Sheldon, you say I wanted to.
Well, the planning board collectively.
And the town council also voted for that, by the way.
Right, right. The, well, I would like to know if you have any updates, are you still planning to go through with that redevelopment plan? Or has that been, been scrapped?
I think that is the plan, the redevelopment plan is the plan by the town council and by the planning board. They have a tenant, they wanna come in and speak to us, I'm sure they would speak to us.
Alright, well, you might wanna, you know, check into that, because it looks like the owner of that property has every intention of leasing the now vacant Kmart building. The, as far as the lawsuit is concerned, that Mr. Frantantonio has been admonished the last couple meetings, everybody's cherry-picking. Mr. Mellon, you cited Judge Waldorf's opinion, a magistrate judge.
I have it right here, I can hand it out to everybody, actually.
Yeah, and I also have Judge Hayden, Judge Hayden oversaw this lawsuit that you filed against the township for four years. Judge Waldorf, magistrate judge, only came in to the picture, area in June.
It was the last judge.
The last judge, right.
Well, you would take the order of the last judge, not the order of the previous judge.
Just so that the record is right, Judge Hayden, who had seen the preponderance of this lawsuit, in, on November 30th, 2018, ordered, she says here, "This matter having come before the court on plaintiff Mellon's Rule 60B motion to vacate his voluntary dismissal, the court have been fully considered, the parties' submissions and for the reasons expressed in the opinion filed here with is, on this 30th day of November, 2018, ordered that Mellon's motion to vacate his voluntary dismissal is denied, and it is further ordered that the defendant shall refile the Rule 11 motion on or before December 21st, 2018. Mellon shall file his opposition on or before January 4th, 2019. Defendants, reply if any shall be due January 11th, 2019. No extensions to this briefing schedule will be granted." So what happened?
What does that have to do with how it all ended?
Well, what happened, we've only to be aware of the history. What happened in January of 2019 is that the Freeno law firm, who had been representing Belleville for the previous four years, were fired, they were dismissed. And in fact, Mr. Tucci, the town manager at that time, the town manager who serves largely at your pleasure-
I'm my pleasure.
Well, the collective council, but you control the council.
I did not at that time, nor do I today.
Mr. Tucci in April of 2019, on the video record-
It's all facts that Mr. Sheldon has no interest in.
Admitted on the video record, that's a fact, Mr. Mellon, admitted on the video record that he dismissed Mr. Freeno of this firm, and you brought in some secondary attorney, Mr. Del Sardo, and the whole thing went into radio silence for six months. And then suddenly, as Judge Waldorf's eight-year term was in its last few days, she comes out of the blue, says that Judge Hayden, who had been on the bench for thirty years, somehow misunderstood Rule 11 procedures and frivolous lawsuit, so that's, that's the whole picture, that's, you know-
Which ended with the court order saying that my suit was not valid.
Judge Waldorf did in fact overrule Hayden, but as of November, at the end of 2018-
Mr. Sheldon, bizarre. What did Judge Waldorf, what did Judge Waldorf overrule? What did Judge Waldorf overrule, explain that to me?
She overruled Judge Hayden's orders.
What order? Where is Judge Hayden's order that Mr. Frantantonio said that-
Can I give this to you?
That, I, is that what you just read?
Her order, I-
Okay, what that order says is, he, his motion was denied, it's just such a waste of time of everybody on this dais. That order says that his motion to vacate, whatever order they're talking about, was denied. And the attorneys have a right to file a Rule 11 motion, and she gave them a time period to file that Rule 11 motion. They filed that Rule 11 motion, and this order which he just read is what resulted in it. It, what resulted in, they filed the Rule 11 motion, which she specifically says, okay, she talks about Rule 11 motion, and she denies it. Where did she overrule?
Judge Waldorf denied it.
What did, well, show me, where did Judge Hayden say it was a frivolous lawsuit? Explain that to me.
Judge Hayden says-
Because I'm so sick of hearing this, in this meeting, for no reason whatsoever. He's one person on this board, I've got six other people up here who donate their time to be here. And you and Mr. Frantantonio come up here, the day he wasn't here, Mr. Cazarelli was up here, nobody spoke. Mario was here, didn't speak. Mr. Frantantonio was here, you come here for him. So, I'm sick of you wasting this board's time, okay? Alright?
Your time is up.
Explain to me where Judge Waldorf over- I want you to do it right here, because I know the facts.
Her order, yeah, and you must carry that with you 24/7, you would seem to have-
No, because after I, because I knew what Mr. Frantantonio had the last time. He had a brief filed by one of the attorneys, that's what he had in his hand. I filed them all the time, I could see it from where he was standing there, I was reading it as he was, okay? So I went back the next day and looked on the court's docket, and the last order on the court's docket is denying the frivolous application, okay?
I agree with you that Waldorf, the other judge who had dismissed the suit, but Judge Hayden did not dismiss it. Judge Hayden was, had every intention of imposing Rule 11 sanctions, I'm just-
Where did, explain to me, where-
It's here, every intention-
It says right here, it says ordered, this is her order.
Okay, ordered what?
Ordered that defendants shall refile their redevelop-
An application, the defendants shall refile an application? Where did Judge Waldorf overrule her? Explain me.
You let me answer you?
Show me where Judge, show me where Judge Hayden said that the lawsuit filed by the plaintiff was frivolous. If you show me that, I will eat my hat right here, show me.
That's what Rule 11 means. Rule 11 sanctions are the penalties imposed when there is a frivolous lawsuit.
You don't have to tell me, I filed them myself.
I'm assuming you have a law degree.
Explain to me, show me Judge Hayden's order, where it says that she finds that the plaintiff filed a frivolous lawsuit. If you show me that, with Mr. Mellon and I will eat our hats on this table.
She is telling the defendants, who in this case, the defendants were the township of Belleville, right? You agree with me, the defendants in this matter-
Absolutely.
Right, so it says ordered that the defendants shall refile the Rule 11 motion. That motion was because the town wanted him to reverse the township, 200,000 dollars.
And they refiled, and they refiled it, and it was denied.
Right, by a different judge.
But when, when was it granted by a judge, explain that to me, how about, I'll use different language for you, maybe to make it more clear for you. When, explain to me where Judge Hayden, show me where Judge Hayden said that the plaintiff's action was frivolous, show me.
We're going around circles, it's right here.
Read it, read it says-
I keep doing it, you-
Read it says that it was a frivolous action on behalf of the plaintiff, explain that to me.
It's the meaning of Rule 11.
Application!
File the application again.
Mr. Sheldon, I know you're a very, very smart man, I know you are, okay, for fact.
This is ridiculous.
But it clearly is not a reversal of Judge Hayden, because Judge Hayden never found-
Then read Waldorf's, Waldorf explicitly says in her final opinion that-
It's very entertaining, very entertaining, but we all have to move on.
Rule 11 was.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon, we'll live despite the dead, how about that? Anybody else in public commenting? No, hearing none, any motion to close, public comment?
Hi, yes, hello?
Yes.
This is Nelson, yes, for you off board.
Hi, Nelson.
Hi, wanted to like apologize to the last time I was on, I'm having a hard time with the thing, I'm almost going to, I'm not able to hear everything as it's happening, it's like, I'm on my end, and I hear my voice and then I hear you guys later.
Okay.
So, just so you know, yeah, I just wanted to check in on the status of the permanent parking, where we are with that, what will happen in the near future with that. I know you also mentioned for me to email town manager, which I haven't got a chance to do. So, and what is, eventually we'll email to him, but just so that everyone hears, and I know, and she is usually also on site. The information that I put on GoPilot, and usually will send and call even to beyond, is the parking that is occurring all the time, day, night, overnight. So the parking that is part of the park on a yellow paint that you actually do on first- on a yellow paint that you actually do at first to try to get people to not park there. So I think that, one, there is some sort of magazine and sonora thing. I don't know what it's used for. It's up to the ugly, hoping that someone can remove it, and it has no use. And then maybe put like a sign there that says, do not park beyond this point. Because when anyone from Rossmore tries to make a left on Washington, the visibility is not. And many times with my kids, obviously, that's the route that I take to go to work, that's the route that I usually take. So it's just a car accident waiting to happen. I called in, I know that's a county road, and trying to get crossroads, you know, cross streets, like, and the information that I got was, since there is no traffic right there, you're not able to put a crossroad to go from, you go walking from that Washington to across the street. So those are two other things. I'm hoping that as a police officer, as a patrol, and I know you got two in that area, is what I was told, two, like six, go off the township, at night especially. So I'm hoping that like as they see them, they start picking them. I know we have some points also that, like, I don't, you know, I don't know how much use, like, you know, crime sites where they can park and put a point in there. And I just, I wish that when the police officers, and I know that's something that Minatini could like set up as an initiative, and the guy is excited, so maybe raise more money, to get more tickets, virators. But from my perspective as a resident, it's just a, it's not a situation waiting to happen. I'm in the car with the kids, and I just don't, a lot of times, I can't make that left there. So that's the biggest thing that I called for. But I also wanted to check on that permit parking situation. Again, I mentioned, sorry, the shop right here. Sorry, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I have shop right. So there... Okay, yeah. So, so as I mentioned, permit parking, this is where I get the opportunity to call in, and I can't, I gotta...
I get it, okay.
Somehow, and it's hard for me to make it to you, Michael, but... Yeah, so, you know, permit parking, you guys, you already heard what I have to say about that. I think it's super important, especially with all these developments, which I think is great. It's going to bring eventually funds to our township. I think that we should stop where we are, because I think that there's a lot, you know, if we continue, I think it's just going to get too overwhelming for our township. So permit parking, it's going to help with so many things. I've been talking to council, the board, our class sizes are, you know... So I already suggested who I thought would be a great thing for permit parking. It helps the school district, figure out who, you know, again, the kids that do not belong there, and then who in our township is living there, and not have that overnight stay. It's just going to look cleaner. I also noticed that on going from Geralman to Main Street, you guys took from the road, really nice, I don't know if that has to do with the Kelsey. Nobody that's going out there revenueing is, if they did it, invested it, or that's the township. I would love to see a cleaner street. Like, that, the pavement, the asphalt, looks so beautiful. The yellow line looks so great. I'm finding it a big area that I've always liked, red flags, everyone. So you got that building on the right-hand side, and it's guarded out there, and it just doesn't look good. People coming from 21, that's what they see. So I'm glad that the streets are being taken care of. But I would like to see that also like in regular streets, like in High Street, on Washington, which again, I know that's a county thing. So just a couple of things that I really wanted to get answered more.
Yeah, your timer has gone off. You're just about out of time with your five minutes, Nelson. I know the manager, you're not here, but I saw the manager making some notes. I know you called in last week to talk about permit parking. It's not really like a wishlist type thing where we grant Christmas wishes here when people call in. I know the town manager wrote that down. I gave you the answer that we typically give for permit parking. So as far as an update or any movement on that, I haven't seen or heard anything on that with regard to everything else you mentioned, whether it's the left turn at Rossmore. The best thing to do, and I tell residents all the time, is it's great to come to a council meeting, but if you can't get to a council meeting, the second best thing is to send an email to the manager, delineating some of the requests, especially when there's a few of them and they're far-reaching like yours are. Because then he'll send a portion of that email to the police department for potentially a traffic study. He'll send it to...
Yeah, no, I have, I have.
Okay. And that's where your updates, that's where your updates would come from. We don't really get those updates here. And, you know, the same thing with the newsbox sign. He would send that to Construction Code to find out if they have a permit. We do permit two different companies to do that, but if their permit is not in order, they would go out and look at it. If the box is broken or damaged, they'll confiscate it. But it's, it's great to put it on the record here, but definitely putting it in written email to the manager would probably be the best way to definitely get some answers.
100%, yeah, no, I agree, and I have, I guess, haven't been in this follow-up. And again, I figure this would be a good opportunity to...
Yeah, no, it's fine. I appreciate the follow-up. Okay, thank you, Nelson. Enjoy shopping.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, bye-bye, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Is there anybody else on the line? I'll take that as a no. The motion to close public commenting, move.
Second.
Motion made in second to close public commenting. Clerk Colerole?
Councilman Casarelli?
Yes.
De Penya?
Yes.
Braziliano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Rebel?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. Consent agenda. Anything for consent? C and D, I got a call. I'm good. Make a motion to move consent agenda?
Second.
Motion made in second to move consent agenda. Clerk Colerole? With the exceptions of D and C?